Thank you, and welcome again to the Mesa City Council meeting for July the 8th of 2024. I will note for the record that all of our council is present with Councilmember Goforth participating virtually. Are you with us, Alicia?
I am, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We will begin our meeting with an invocation offered by Reverend Derek Elliott with Desert Heritage Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We're pleased today to have a large contingent of Boy Scouts with us, and this is from Troop 10, is that right? And we're going to invite the senior patrol leader from Troop 10 to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance following Dr. Elliott's prayer. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My friends, let us take a moment to center ourself in gratitude and reflection as I pray in my tradition. Almighty and gracious God, we come before you with thanksgiving in our hearts, grateful for the opportunity to gather as a community dedicated to the well-being of the city. We acknowledge your being and your presence among us and seek your guidance as we commence this meeting. We ask for your wisdom to fill our minds, that our decisions may reflect justice, compassion, and integrity. Grant us with the clarity to see beyond our differences and work together for the common good for all residents of Mesa. In this gathering, oh God, we honor and respect the multitude of beliefs represented here in our great city. And as we work together, may we always remember the inherent dignity and worth of every person. In our great city, oh God, let us strive to foster in an environment of diversity, equity, and inclusion, ensuring that all voices are heard and valued. Bless those who serve our city, the elected officials, the staff, and all who contribute to make Mesa a better place. We ask for your blessing upon our city, its leaders, its families, and its future. May we strive to build a community where justice, peace, and love prevail. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for getting us off to a great start. First item on our agenda for this meeting is to consider the consent agenda, and we'll invite Lily King to come forward to read the consent agenda. Lily.
Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted on with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Baja Joe's 1927 North Gilbert Road. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Skyline Liquor and Foods 415 South Higley Road. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Nail 21 Lounge 1702 South Alvista Drive. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Ramos Redux 1526 East Main Street. Item 3, item 3E, act on liquor license application for Mr. Brew's Tap's House, Red Mountain 1157 North Ellsworth Road. Item 3F, act on liquor license application for Arizona Rebel Republic 4425 South Mountain Road. Item 3G, act on liquor license application for Abysa Bourbon 2235 South Power Road. Item 3H, act on liquor license application for Russo's New York Pizzeria 4537 South Power Road. Item 3I, act on liquor license application for Speedway 7226 South Ellsworth Road. Item 4A, approving contract for Central Mesa reused pipeline plans, construction manager at risk, guarantee price number 3 of 3. Item 4B, approving contract for Westwood Street improvements, construction manager at risk, guarantee maximum price number 1 of 1. Item 4C, approving contract for purchase of one electric forklift for the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is funded by the Public Safety Sales Tax. Item 4D, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for polymers for water treatment plants for the Water Resources Department. Item 4E, approving three-year term contract with eight years of renewal options for the purchase and maintenance of two ion chromatographs for the Water Resources Department. Item 4F, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for the Traffic Signals Maintenance Services for the Transportation Department. Item 4G, approving use of cooperative contracts for the term contracts for PC cycle replacement and supplemental computers, ruggedized laptops and tablets for citywide departments. Item 5A was removed from the agenda. Item 5B, approving resolution to enter into amended and restated intergovernmental agreements between the Arizona Border Regions, Arizona State University, and the City of Mesa for development of educational facilities in downtown Mesa with terms that allow for sale, transfer, lease, and license of city real property and improvement. Item 6A, approving ordinance for proposal of amendments to Section 11-7-2 of Title 11 of the Mesa City Code allowing banquet and conference centers in certain employment districts. Item 6B, approving ordinance for proposal amendments to Chapters 24 and 85 of Title 11 of the Mesa City Code pertaining to city special events. Item 6C, approving ordinance amending the Mesa City Code for repealing existing Chapter 10 of Title 8 and adopting a new replacement, Title 8, Chapter 10, entitled Municipal Water Systems pertaining to large water consumer users. Item 6D, approving ordinance for zoning case 23-465 for property located west of Gilbert Road and north of Brown Road, rezone and site plan review to allow for a daycare center. Item 7A, approving a new off-track betting license for Turf Paradise to telecast at J.J. Madison's 430 North Power Road. Item 7B, approving new off-track betting license for Turf Paradise to telecast at O'Kelly's Sports Bar and Grill 2120 West Guadalupe Road. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. King. Have we received any blue cards regarding an item on the consent agenda?
No requests, Mayor.
Mayor, council, can I just correct one? For 6B, it's a proposed amendments to Chapter 24 and 87 of Title 11. I just want to make sure to correct it. I think we just had one number off in that. Liddy.
Thank you very much. With that noted, we have a motion made by Councilmember Freeman, seconded by Vice Mayor Heredia. Please vote. Ms. Goforth, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda passes unanimously. First item off the consent agenda is item 5A. This is approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city and Habitat Phoenix LLC establishing the framework and key concepts for negotiation of future agreements for the redevelopment of the southeast corner of Pepper Place and McDonald's. I have received two blue cards. Do we have any additional cards?
Those are the only cards, Mayor.
All right. So I'm going to invite these two speakers to come up and share whatever they'd like to about this item, and then I'm going to ask city staff to give a presentation that hopefully responds to some of those issues, and then we'll have council discussion following that.
Do you want to have the presentation first? It might answer a lot of questions?
Well, I'm thinking maybe Mr. McVeigh can kind of tailor his presentation to maybe issues that are raised in the, by the speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's begin with Mr. Charles Linton. Welcome, Mr. Linton.
Thank you. This is like some kind of bad dream. Sorry about this. So my name is Chuck Linton. I own and operate Linton Milano Music, which operates at 38 West Main Street upstairs as well as 45 West Main Street, which is on the south side of the street. We specialize in music lessons, books, and pianos. I run a successful business. We have 850 students that come on a weekly basis that take lessons both upstairs at Milano's and across the street at the piano shop. I've come, sorry, I have to write everything down or else I lose it, but I've come tonight to oppose the project presented, which will block our parking lot for the next two years because it will have a negative effect on our business. In the evening, the only entrance for the students that take lessons upstairs at 38 West Main Street is through the back alley. The front entrance is closed at 6:00. So at that point, our students would have to park in the Pepper Place garage and navigate the empty dark alleys behind the store to come in through that back door. Oftentimes, there are homeless people back there. It's a tough sell for the elderly or children with families to convince them that that's, you know, worth doing. Overall, a major inconvenience for us, not only in the lessons department, but actually in probably all the other departments of our business as far as the books. A lot of our clients are, you know, elderly that come in and purchase those books. Another concern I'd like to address is the lack of communication. I'm disappointed in Jen Duff for not informing the businesses of this proposal. I'm disappointed that I didn't have sufficient time to speak with the other businesses about this proposal. I'm disappointed that I didn't get to speak to the residents of Eco Mesa West, and I'm disappointed that I didn't get more time to fight for my livelihood. The real question is, would it have made a difference? If every business stood up against this proposal, residents, would it have made a difference? No, no, it wouldn't have. The deal has already been made. All the emails I've sent out reflect a decision that has already been made. Truth be told, you've been in the talk, been in a talk for years about this. I found out about this three days ago. You're public servants, yet you make your decisions without hearing the voice of the public. I question your motives in pushing this deal through in such a clandestine manner, another in a long line of good old boy deals that pepper our city, but only time will tell. Anyway, tonight's my daughter's birthday, so I need to leave, and people kept asking me. I come from three generations of downtown Mesa business owners, and I asked them, I said, "You guys going to come to the meeting?" And they said, "No, the decision's been done. They know what they're going to do." So I asked myself, "Why, why am I doing this?" And I have, I have no idea. I don't know. I guess I just needed to say something. But I probably won't come back and speak anymore on this topic. I got to get back to work and figure out how to navigate the next couple of years. But thanks for, thanks for hearing me out, and I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you, Mr. Linton.
Thank you.
Hopefully you can stick around for a little bit, or you can watch the rebroadcast because we will absolutely address the things that you said. Okay? Thank you. Next, David Crummy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's David Crummy, 658 West First Street, downtown Mesa resident, neighbor. I just, I come to support this proposal in general because it supports the plans that we've been working on at the city level and across through our downtown working groups, through our zoning ordinances, and through the work that we've been doing at the general plan for the last, I think, 15 years now. Being able to add parking downtown, removing the city parking and moving that over to another spot is going to increase a lot of opportunities for our business. I do understand it's going to be two years of construction. We experienced that just down the street. But as someone who comes downtown with my family, my wife, I bring clients and entertain them downtown during the day, didn't really see a lot of disruption with the first project, especially for the businesses that I was visiting that were immediately there. I'm also a member of Heat Sync Labs, and so we access the lab at night through the, through the alley, which was closer to the first Eco Mesa, which was less of a concern than a lot of us had, especially because that was at the same time as the construction of the post. So we had two construction projects happening, and it didn't affect my experience visiting the lab. In general, I just want to support this type of like traditional, old-school, American downtowns where we have a walkable place. We don't have these giant islands of isolated hot parking lots that when we are bringing our students and our friends to the Arizona Museum of Natural History and other places, we have a nice, convenient, safe place to walk that is cool and has some shading and provides that. I also sit, I support a school board that visits the museum pretty frequently, and it would be great not to have a giant hot parking lot for our students to walk by. In general, this is the right place for a modest, low-density apartment complex adjacent to transit, and so far, I, the other thing that I want to mention is it also reduces the cost burden on the city and on our community by offsetting that and having a developer and those residents support that. And then it also brings additional business to downtown through sales tax and through more clients. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crummy. Let's hear from city staff and Mr. McVeigh. If you could maybe address some of the questions that Mr. Linton raised, and if you don't mind, I made a couple of notes. The first is, is to what extent there was notification and engagement with the downtown business people about this? And second, let me, let's just, let's remind us all our, let's all remind ourselves what we're voting on tonight. We are not voting on whether or not we're going to enter into an agreement to redevelop this parking lot. We are voting tonight on whether or not we ought to engage in negotiations with the developer to talk about that. Okay? And so as we have those negotiations, Mr. McVeigh, to what extent will, will we talk about what the requirements are for mitigating the impacts of construction on the surrounding businesses? And then finally, can you spell out for us the number of parking spaces before, during, and after this project and, and getting access from the Pepper Street Garage to specifically Mr. Linton's business? I'm sorry, that's all, those are the things that I think Mr. Linton was, was curious about.
Mayor, I'll try to be able to cover all those. Again, Mayor, council, Jeff McVeigh, manager of Downtown Transformation, thank you for the time today. Directly related to Mr. Linton's questions about engagement, there has been engagement with the existing businesses. The developer has reached out to all the businesses on that block. It was over the course of the last week, so that was, so it wasn't less noticed than would normally be provided if this were a zoning case that required some type of, of legal public notification requirements. I will be the first to admit, even though I am a student of Linton Milano's, I've only had lessons on the south side of Main Street. I didn't realize there was lessons on the north side of Main Street. So the engagement happened with the Milano's, the Milano's business versus the Linton Milano's. So that was an oversight on our part that we will, we will be able to correct as we move forward. Through, as you said, Mayor, this is a memorandum of understanding. This is a, an agreement to, to potentially agree later. There is a lot of negotiations to happen between now and when council will actually make a vote as to whether this project goes forward. Through that entire time, much of the negotiations that we will be talking about is construction mitigation, and how is the developer going to address the concerns that we have going forward with the impact to the downtown broadly and businesses specifically. We learned a number of lessons with Eco Mesa, the, the existing Eco Mesa project, on how to address concerns. One of the reasons that, that staff is supportive of this proposal and, and want, and suggesting moving forward is that the developer is the same developer as Eco Mesa. The developer was very responsive and very engaging with all of the businesses prior to construction, through construction, and since construction. That included ensuring that the alleyway was maintained open throughout construction. Now, there is of course always those limited amounts of time during construction where there has to be some closure of the alley, but those were, those were minimized to the greatest extent possible. There was additional security fence, fencing added. There was additional lighting added to address some of the same concerns that we had on the west block for safety of people in the alleyway. Mr. Sprague is here today and is, is happy to come up and, and express his perspective on this as well, but I can assure you from our conversations that all efforts will be taken to mitigate any of the negative impacts of having a construction site immediately adjacent to your back door, particularly when the back door is, is the entrance to many of the businesses. That's not to say that there won't be, wouldn't be inconveniences, of course, but the, the intent would be to maintain that alley open throughout construction. As it relates to parking, today, the green lot has 75 generally available public parking spaces. Those parking spaces would be displaced during the construction period. The intention is to replace, move those parking spaces into the Pepper Parking Garage. Today, the Pepper Parking Garage has 513 spaces. Of those 513 spaces, 130, a minimum of 130 would be made available during construction for generally available public parking, and that's being accomplished through, by the relocation of existing city employee parking spaces to the newly, hopefully, well, by the end of this year, newly opened Hibbert Parking Garage. It frees up those spaces to be, make them available to offset the parking that we are displacing during construction, but it will also give us a net increase in generally available public parking during the construction period. We will also have to work during construction on how we are we going to, to do wayfinding for the public, not only just pedestrian wayfinding. So if you are leaving the Pepper Garage, what is your best route to get to which business and have the appropriate signage to, to help direct folks. Same thing with cars, to help direct people to the public parking. I think one of the challenges that we have faced, and one of the lessons we learned in the first Eco project, is that we needed to do a better job of making it obvious that that is public parking, and that is something that we have thought of and included into this, into this agreement structure, is that developer would be obligated to help and improve the wayfinding for the new green parking garage if it were approved. Mayor, I'm trying to remember all the questions. The experience during construction is another thing that I wanted to talk about. I mentioned earlier the developer has constant communications throughout the, the past project. I, I did some informal polling over the weekend at the businesses downtown that were impacted by that construction effort to, to gauge their, their level of input. They had noted that there was some days where, well, construction is construction and it, and it caused some, some challenges, but overall, their experience was, was positive, and that since, since completion of construction, they've been very pleased to have that newly replaced purple parking lot as a public parking garage with covered parking and shade. The, the project itself is successful and has, currently has 99 of its 102 units, our least, and those are new customers. And one of the, one of our goals with all of these projects is to increase the, the customer base of downtown through residential development versus through the need to drive traffic through events and activities. We would like our, our downtown to be a place where the existing businesses are, are experiencing increased activity due to the increased number of residents. We have, we have, as staff, received written support from the Downtown Mesa Association, 12 West, Level 1 Arcade Bar, Alchemy 48, and Outkast Donuts to this proposed project. We have also had verbal support voiced from Mango's, Dixon's Jewelers, and the ownership of the One McDonald Office Building. And, and I think it's important to note that in, in their statement, one of the businesses, Outkast Donuts, in their statement in support noted that adding these residential, these residents to downtown is an improve, is an, is an improvement to their business opportunities. They currently experience highs and lows, highs when we have events and lows when, when we don't. And one of the, one of their reasons for supporting this is that that will help level out the highs and lows so that there is more of a customer base built in. Trying to have some notes here. I want to make sure I'm covering everything. Following construction, so I've covered, following construction, I think it's important to note that the 70, the existing 74 generally available public parking spaces will be moved back to the green lot where they exist today. They will, the development will be built in such a way that you will be able to pass through development underneath from Pepper through the development to the back door, the businesses along the alleyway. The benefit of adding that covered parking has, is, is twofold. For us as customers, when we come downtown, we get shaded parking, but also from the perspective of freeing up spaces in Pepper Garage to be able to generate additional revenues for the city, because we will be freeing up an additional 130 spaces that can be used to support the increased business activity, as well as hopefully the increased activity that's coming with improvements to our Idea Museum and Natural History Museum down the road. I, I, I think I covered all the points that, that were asked, but I'm happy, if there's specific questions, I'm happy to.
You did address the questions that I asked you to address, Mr. McVeigh. Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions for Mr. McVeigh? Ms. Philsbury?
Yeah, just so that we're super, super clear on the parking, because that is my biggest concern. I want to make sure that I get the concept of making sure that we have the residents down here to provide the customers and, and that that's a different way of looking at it than just bringing people downtown for an event. But I do want to make sure that when we do bring people down to the museums, Mesa Art Center, the Convention Center, you know, all, all the things that we have enough parking. And I think at our discussion last week, it kind of sounded like we had like a net zero, and so you're explaining that we actually are going to have an increased number of parking. So the 130 extra parking in the Pepper Garage during the tiers of construction is almost double that what the public parking is currently, just that you might have to walk a little bit farther.
That is correct.
Once the construction's done, the 74 parking spots will go back to the bottom floor of the Eco Mesa East and will be in the same spot that they already were, and we will still have 130 spots that will be open to public parking for museums and all businesses.
That, there will be 130 spots that will no longer have permit spaces attached to them. It will be at the council's discretion whether or not we maintain those as generally available public parking, or whether or not there's other projects that you would want to, or other opportunities for permit parking that you'd like to consider.
Okay. I, I met with you earlier. I just want to publicly say that so that I can acknowledge that I had a lot of questions and a lot of things that I don't think we talked about last week, and I appreciate all of the answers and helping to understand where we're coming from. It does make me feel better also that we're not voting on something tonight that's like a done deal. We still have opportunities to make sure that things are being done the way that, that we need them to be done. I'm trying, I, I think that's it. I'm, I had a lot of questions and, and thoughts, but I'll let some other people go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was a little surprised that we had some pushback here, and I think there was a, a miss in communicating with your guitar teacher that, you know, that this, this was going on, because this is, this is the start of the process, not the end of the process. As been stated, nothing has been decided. This is just the beginning of the discussion that we had. I, I think what some of the stress is, because I'm, you know, looking up Milano Music, and according to their own website, they have been a part of downtown Mesa for over 70 years. I mean, the, the first thing here is 1946. I, I can understand when they get a little shell-shocked by projects. This business has, I don't even know if Mesa had a paved street in downtown in 1946, maybe just the one, but they have undergone so many projects. The Main Street redevelopment, the light rail coming through, you have, we replaced all of the water mains behind because those water mains were over 100 years old. So I could see where people get a little tired of the construction process, but, you know, growth can be painful. I, I think they're going to do with our support very well in the future, and they will, they will get through this. Answer me one thing. Where exactly is the Pepper Street Garage in comparison to this existing parking lot?
I'm looking through these slides, Councilmember Summers, to see whether I have one that provides. The best I can, so this, as you can see on this slide, and I don't really have a great pointer, but the, you see the blue spaces that are along Pepper Street? Pepper Street Garage is the building immediately on the north side of that.
Okay, so it's across the street?
Yes. Yes.
And I think it's important for people to understand that that's the distance. Now, I, it's a pain to walk across a hot street. Now, my parking spot for this meeting is actually across the street. It's not so bad. I cheated today, I parked a little closer because I didn't want to walk the heat. So I, I understand where that's going to be a little bit inconvenient for some folks, but as part of this process to stress that these are public spaces and covered, for that matter, because it's in a garage, you got to walk a little farther, but it's going to be in a garage so your car gets to stay a little bit cooler. I think that's going to be important for this process to make sure that everybody knows that there is parking available and that that is free to the public to use. There were some concerns about the back alley also. I think we can address those very simply. We have downtown engagement teams now, former police officers that patrol those areas. This is a good opportunity perhaps to put up a few cameras that are monitored by the real-time crime center, looking at some of the police officers, to improve the safety, not just during construction, but perhaps permanently for the folks who are walking that alley, and to look at upgrades to that alley. In addition, obviously, as we move through this, making sure that at the end of the day, when all is said and done, that we are net zero, I think is how you put it, with the parking, that there's still ample parking for businesses downtown, is going to be crucial to the success of this project and the businesses downtown. I think everything, all the concerns that we heard, and they're legitimate concerns from this successful business owner, can be addressed during this MOU. So I'm in favor of moving it forward and having these discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Vice Mayor.
Jeff, what's the total amount of parking spots in the, in the garage?
The Pepper Garage has 513 spaces.
513, okay. So currently, we have 130 that are permitted, and the rest are?
Oh, there are, let me get this, get the number right. There are only 21 spaces in that garage that are not permit spaces today. So this will, this will add to the total of generally available parking spaces by 130 to get that total to 151 spaces that are generally available to the public.
That happens because we're moving.
Right, because we are moving out.
We're moving.
Spaces that are currently permitted spaces, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Ms. Duff.
Yes, thank you. And, and on that 21 spaces that we have currently, half of them are ADA.
Correct.
So really, going from that amount into 130, and I'm talking about after construction and during construction, those parking spaces. Right now, we're going from 21 spaces, half of them are ADA, to 150 total, I guess about 140 open to the public. And that'll be during construction and after construction. The beauty is, after construction, we have the 74 spaces currently in the Green Lot will be covered. And the beauty of it is we will have an apartment building that has maybe 150 people living there, and they will be at the doorstep of so many businesses, they could go down in their slippers, and those 150 customers are not even taking a parking space to be a customer in downtown. So it really works out nicely. Just going back to, I moved to downtown in 2009. I've lived here all my life. In 2009, this is a ghost town, and it had been for so long, about 40 years since the US-60 moved south to where it is right now, the downtown has suffered greatly. And it was my goal when I come on council is, we've got to bring our downtown back, and many others have that desire. Your office was created, there was the Mesa Central Plan as well, your office was created, and we discovered, like, this square mile of downtown was the least dense of our entire city, unless it was vacant land. We have the least amount of residents living in one square mile. No wonder the businesses are struggling. Since then, we've added a lot of residential, and we've added a lot of businesses, but those businesses still struggle, and they're asking, day in and day out, I need people here, living here and frequenting the businesses. I can't depend on only when the city is working or only when we have events in downtown Mesa. We need more people. And this is a downtown model. If you think about any favorite city you know of across the United States that you've visited, it's dense, it's vertical, parking is centralized, which is means you usually have parking garages, and you navigate from there. This is not a strip mall environment in a downtown. It's not like everybody parks outside the door of it. It is centralized parking, and it becomes a social interaction as you shop, as you eat, as you visit the art center. You are seeing people, seeing businesses. The streetscape should be beautiful, walkable, inviting. It is a living room for a city. And that's, I think, what we're trying to achieve. We're not trying to get rid of parking, but we're trying to make just empty lots that are not producing anything but just pure heat and into viable economic means for our city. And this, the beauty of this project is we're not getting, we're not losing any parking. We're building over it. It's a fabulous model. The West ECO Mesa, the one that's already built, has been fabulously successful. I know a number of people who live there and, and love it. I've talked to the businesses surrounding that, and they said it's just been, business has been much better since they've had it, it's more activated, it's safer, those alleys are, have people walking along those alleys as much as they do on Main Street. This is a downtown that we are working towards, and it is to help everybody. We don't want any business, especially our legacy businesses. I do appreciate that they've been here for all these years and struggled for such a long time, but staying depressed, staying a ghost town is not a good strategy to building a great downtown. So we've worked with Tim on the previous project. He's phenomenal. And we, if we had issues that we didn't think were appropriate or we couldn't bear, this project wouldn't even be presented. He's been wonderful, he's got part of the downtown, he knows the owners, and he engages every little question, problem. He and his team are there. I've never seen such attention to a project. So I'm confident with the West project that's already built, it was 10 times more complex, and I could go over that, and I don't want to spend the time. This one is much more streamlined and much easier, and having double the parking during construction, and I know it's a little bit more of a walk, but to be a successful downtown, we have to rethink about these temporary measures we have to take in order to accomplish the greater good down the road. So I'm trying to think if there is anything else. Also, just to let people know, we have a lot here at City Hall, and it is open after 5:00 PM, the arms come up, and that's another option, to be very close to that Green Lot. It's a very short walk. I'm confident that Mr. Sprague will work with the city, the Downtown Transformation Office has had the experience in working with him, I've had the experience. I apologize to anybody who would, didn't receive the outreach ahead of time, maybe we were a little bit too lax. I, I can't really say that, given, I think, some assumptions that we made based on the last project, that this project would be easier going forward. It was kind of an understanding of, of what it was. So I try, I've answered every email that's coming my way, and I'm glad to meet with anybody, and I'm, and I'm totally available today and through the process. Ahead of us, this is the memo of understanding about what the project would entail, it's like a letter of intent, kind of. An appraisal will be done for the property, there will be a development agreement, the development agreement, there will be a purchase agreement and a development agreement that have to be approved by council and will have public notice. And within the development agreement, there's a good neighbor clause of any measures that need to be taken, which everybody is taking care of, and this project is adding to the health and amenity of, and of downtown. So I'm fully in support, and I'm glad to work with anybody, and working through any questions that we haven't covered or need to cover, or just sit down at any point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Other comments? Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Jeff, for your, our discussion here. You know, I learned from this that we need some better communication. I, I know you're doing your, your best, and I know Mr. Sprague has, and I think as council members, we, we have the opportunity to meet one-on-one with you as staff, and then as, as well as the developer. But I think that as you walk businesses and you talk to them directly, I don't know if they fully comprehend the whole project, and, and that's where the opportunity is. You could go look at ECO Mesa, we'll call it West, and talk to those business owners and say, how did, how, how did it work for you? Was it okay? I know that there were some bumps in the road because we had the two projects going on there. So I think we've learned that we need to do better messaging for these type of downtown projects. The other part is, I'd like Mr. Smith maybe to talk us through the MOU process. I know you did a little bit about that, but kind of the nuts and bolts of that, Mr. Smith, about the MOU process and, and what that entails.
So Mayor, Council, Councilmember Freeman, we've done this, and I know council's familiar with this, and I know you are, Councilmember Freeman, is on a number of deals. And so we enter into an, an MOU, and as many people have said, it's not a binding agreement, but it lays out the structure of the nature of the deal. Because these deals are so complex, as Councilmember Duff indicated a number of the documents, it'll be actually a number more than even she indicated. And so it lays out the, the basic structure of the deal so that we can move forward, and so the developer has a sense from council that council's interested in moving forward with the possibility of negotiating these documents that frequently take several more months, and then will come back to council with a development agreement, with a lease, with a purchase contract. It will also include an easement, probably some licenses, and I'm probably forgetting a few other documents too, that will be part of a process, documents that council will have to approve.
Okay. And is there time for public input during that time?
Absolutely, and there'll be, there'll be opportunity for the public to also, you know, meet with Jeff and council members individually, and so, and we can obviously, sometimes we bring these back to council as we, as we're working on them, so depending on the nature of the, the transaction.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to stress that the fact, this is just the beginning, like has been said by my colleagues, and, and, and right now, I'm supporting that. And I think we learned our lesson at ECO Mesa, that even today with it build out, there's still parking issues there, even with the ECO Mesa West. I know some of the leases, they have two vehicles and they can only park one there, so, and we, we've talked about that, there's some bleed over there. So I appreciate the parking opportunities that we'll have, about, I think, 240 of public parking spaces once everything is done, 204, is that right, somewhere in there?
The.
130 plus 74?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I, I guess, still, Mr. Brady, we do need more parking downtown. You know, in the future, I think we need to look towards that and how, how we can strategize that. And I'm, I'm not putting you on the spot now, I'm just saying, it's a work in progress, and, and, and I think that it'd be good to have a, a meeting, Mr. Sprague, and as the developer, with all the downtown businesses, and maybe at the Post or the Studios, and let's get this aired out and have everybody come together, and as the developer, as this development moves forward, because I think we've learned from the prior project, as I said. So I think that would be very good, and if appropriate, Mayor, maybe we could hear from Mr. Sprague if he'd like to make some comments later on.
Mayor, while Mr. Sprague is moving up here.
Jeff, why don't you, did you have anything to wrap up?
Just a couple of thoughts. Another element, Councilmember Freeman, related to the MOU, one of the reasons why we have an MOU in front of you today is that Mr. Sprague is potentially about to start spending somewhere near, you know, seven figures on preliminary design work, construction drawings, and architecture. Without the, without the certain level of confidence that an MOU, and the, and the framework that that provides, that's a, a very risky venture to take otherwise. And yes, Mayor, or Councilmember Freeman, my team, we will host as many meetings as necessary for all the businesses that want to engage. I can tell you from our past experience, we actually, I actually had to draft a memorandum, my own memorandum of an understanding between me and the businesses that were being affected by ECO Mesa West, to make sure that they understood what provisions were being included into the, the, the development agreement to address their concerns related to access and parking. And we will go through that same process. We will not be able to bring something to you that we don't feel confident that addresses those concerns, so that you are able to, to make a decision based on that feedback.
And just real quickly, I want to assure the residents though, Jeff, despite the fact this is an MOU, and I know Mr. Sprague has been to this many times, he's had a lot of public projects, there is no guarantee that this project gets approved by future councils.
Correct.
Okay, there's no big deal here. This, the way I look at it is, is the framework. So instead of spending a lot of expensive attorneys, a lot of staff time negotiating an agreement that we'd bring back to council, and the council goes, how did you come up with that idea? This is beginning to create, bring these ideas forward, put them down in concepts, and work on the details. We should probably come back to council and to the community multiple times, and not wait until six months later, or whatever it's going to be, to final, a final agreement. So we'll commit to, let's work through some more of these details, let Mr. Sprague spend some more time talking to the businesses, getting more details on the footprint and the sequencing of timing. I think that's going to be important, but I want to make sure nobody believes that just because we approve an MOU, we are destined and obligated to sign an agreement. We're not. This is just gives, it makes, it facilitates the, the discussion, and now the details of the negotiations with the attorneys, because now we have the framework which to use on kind of the outline of the business points, and we'll proceed with that. And really what we're asking council is, do you like the direction this is going in? We're not asking you to approve the project. Do you like the direction we're moving in? And we've covered some of the main topics, we've talked about things that may have to be addressed in more detail, but a lot of that may not be in the agreement, it just may be in the discussion with the community, and maybe it's the good neighbor plan, and so I just want to assure this idea, this is not a baked deal, there's no, you know, final deals that have been made at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just add, because I'll read one sentence out of the MOU that really kind of emphasizes this. It says, "This memorandum is not binding upon either party nor legally enforceable, imposes no enforceable obligations upon either party, and does not grant any rights, privileges, or obligations to or in favor of either party or against the other." It just further emphasizes what Chris just said.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Jeff, Mr. Sprague, welcome. We're anxious to hear anything you'd like to add to this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I want to speak sincerely. I think the questions that were asked are extremely relevant. I grew up in a small town lot in Oklahoma, with a main street almost exactly like the one we have here, and I think a big part of my heart is in trying to preserve that, and trying to reserve what a community can be like in, in the future. And what we've learned in the future is that transportation is important, arts is important, and education is important for us in terms of where we like to do development. And Mesa has all three of those big rocks to put in the jar. And one of the things we've tried to do is to create a living environment that works, and that is in concert with what's going on around in the ultimate community. During the course of construction of, of ECO Mesa, we created a website just for construction, and on that you had a chronological order of what was going to happen, any potential inconvenience was mapped, not only by our construction team, but also by the city itself. And it worked, and we sent out an email if anything was coming up during, during the course of construction, again, that may have been an inconvenience, and it worked. And one thing that I pledged to do, and that I have already and I will do in the future, is that I meet with anybody anytime. I walk around and meet the people face-on, I give them my card and my cell number, and I say, "Call me anytime." I did that quickly, because if you are going through the break for, for, for the summer, and I met with the Milano's folks, I didn't realize that Mr. Linton had that many classes on the north side of Main Street. I reached out to him for this weekend, and unfortunately, we were not able to, to, to connect, he didn't call back. But I will tell you, the most important thing for me during the course of construction is to make, make sure people know where they're going. is to make, make sure people know where they're going. Wayfinding is extremely important. Signage in terms of how you get to from point A to point B makes all the sense in the world to me. I grew up in a family of merchants, and I know what it's like to be able to have that Main Street work. I know what it's like to have people know where you are. You have my pledge to do that as much as possible, of what's necessary. And yeah, there is a risk that we're taking right now, just as Mr. Brady said. But that risk for us is something we want to pursue because we like Mesa, and we think it's the place to be, and we want to make it better. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Sprague?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Ms. Goforth, do you want to add anything to this? Any questions or comments from you?
Sure, thank you. I, you know, I, everything I'd like to say has pretty much been said, other than I would like to say that I am in support of going forward with the MOU for a lot of reasons, like I said, that, that have been mentioned. But first of all, because it is an MOU, this is not a sale of, of, of the parcel or a contract for sale or a development agreement. There, there'll be time for input. It's the beginning of the process. As we've said, growth is frustrating. That's something we certainly have to be sensitive to. But it's, our, it's part of, certainly part of our council's vision for our downtown and previous councils' vision as well, to have a vibrant and active downtown. And I think this, just as Eco Mesa West, if you will, contributed to that, hopefully this, a project like this, I think, will as well. And, and most importantly, we're not losing any spaces. So I think that's been said, and that's certainly important. And, and this will be an activated space once it's finished with those, those parking spaces preserved. I would like to kind of, you know, there's been a couple of comments, we need more parking, we don't have enough parking. I, I think that maybe a review of the parking, you know, because my perception, and I think that's based on perceptions, my perception is every time in downtown, I see many, many, many open parking spots. So maybe if we have, maybe at some point, and maybe we don't have to do it at the council meeting, but we can have Jeff come back to us with, how many, how many public parking, parking spots are available in downtown? What's the assessment right now? And with some of the new developments that have gone in, how has it changed? Because it seems that we maybe have some different perspectives on, on the parking available downtown currently.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goforth. Council, any additional discussion?
I'll weigh in as, as well. I, I am, I love our downtown. I'm very proud of our downtown. I, I get complimented on it frequently, and I love walking downtown and, and enjoying the great businesses that are there and the great environments that, that is there. But whenever I do that, I also am struck by the fact that we are not done with our downtown. There, there still are plenty of dark spots in between, you know, the, the level, the, the bright spots. And I think, in my mind, one of the, the things that we need to focus on in our downtown is we need people downtown. We need to not have this perception that the streets roll up, you know, at the end of the business day. And so it's been, it's been great to see, there's a real appetite for people to move downtown and live downtown. And we've got some great examples with Melody on Main and the first Eco Mesa project and The Grove and, and what CPLC is doing at Country Club and, and many others that are starting to line up, recognizing this, this attraction that people have to the amenities that are downtown. And, and I'm excited to see that downtown is, is on the cusp of becoming a neighborhood, not just a place that people come, you know, to, for entertainment, but a place that people live. And that is going to, to really create a, a culture and an environment downtown that's going to make it even more inviting than it is now. One of the great things about this particular project and this question is that we've done this, right? We just, you know, we just came out of, of going through, working with this exact developer, this exact, pretty much, floor plan, very similar location, literally just probably less than a quarter mile away. And so for the folks that are skeptical about this, Mr. Sprague is the real deal. He'll, he'll, he'll buy you a taco at Taco Chihuahua's and he'll talk to you about what it is about this project that you find scary. And he'll add that to the list of things in our MOU to, to help you feel less scared about the progress that is happening downtown. So please tour the, the project that's been built. Please walk through that parking garage. It's amazing. It's a, it's a wonderful amenity for those businesses that are on Main Street now. A lot of, you know, all of the public parking that was there before is there after. And so a lot of the, the questions that we had about doing this project were answered over the last couple of years as we did this project, just down the street. And, and my compliments to Mr. Sprague for his, the way he was so responsive to the businesses and to the neighborhoods. And that's why I'm excited to see us entertain doing it again. So I, I am in, in support of this project and I look forward to the way it's going to contribute to the amazing character that's being developed in our downtown right now. All right, council, any other discussion?
I see that we have a, a motion made by Councilmember Summers, seconded by Vice Mayor Haredia. Please vote. Ms. Goforth, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for everyone who, who was here. And hopefully we'll get, Mr. Sprague, I know that you will reach out to Mr. Linton. I, I talked with Mr. Linton today, and frankly, he told me that you had sent him a couple of emails. So I, I don't want people to think that you haven't already extended that offer, but I, I think it's important that we continue to work with him. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item eight, items from citizens present. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this agenda item?
No further requests, Mayor.
All right, thank you. That concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Ms. Billingsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.